Good evening and welcome to the City of Pasco Council Meeting. The council thanks you for being part of our city government. Agenda packages are available on the City of Pasco's website at www.pasco-wa.gov/agenda. Please note that the city council meetings continue to be held remotely and may be viewed through our GoToWebinar. Through proclamation number 20-28.3, Governor Inslee extended the directive making temporary changes to the Open Public Meeting Act. These virtual meetings will continue until the OPMA restrictions are lifted. This meeting is being televised live on Pasco TV, Channel 191, on Spectrum Cable in Pasco and Richland, and also streamed on the city's Facebook page, website, and YouTube channel. This meeting is also live via the GoToWebinar link on the agenda. And lastly, the public may submit their comments and/or questions for items not on the agenda through GoToWebinar, the City of Pasco's Facebook page, or by emailing the city managers directly. And with that, I want to say, uh, welcome again to our city council meeting. Um, wanted to emphasize in every meeting that we are adhering to the, um, the social distancing practices, making sure we wear masks. I'm only having it off so I, um, so I can speak clearly and also, uh, making sure that everybody is, as you can see, are way more than six feet apart. And we have sanitizer, our sanitizers and hand cleaners, making sure these things are available and making, doing everything we can to stay safe during this time with the pandemic. So with that, I'd like to go to a roll call, a roll call, please.
Councilmember Alvarado.
Present.
Councilmember Maloney.
Present.
Councilmember Milne.
Present.
Councilmember Roach.
Present.
Councilmember Serrano.
Here.
Mayor Protem Barajas.
Present.
And Mayor Martinez.
Present.
Seven accounted for, Mayor.
Thank you, and with that, we will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And we will move right along to the consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by roll call vote as one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If further discussion is desired by council members or the public, the item may be removed from the consent agenda to the regular agenda and considered separately. With that, uh, on the consent agenda, we got the approval of meeting minutes to approve the minutes of the Pasco City Council remote meeting held on May 18, 2020, and remote special meeting and workshop held on May 26, 2020. Uh, next item is bills and communications to approve claims in the total amount of $2,207,925.52. And electronic funds, um, and yes. And the next item would be a confirm of Historic Preservation Commission reappointment to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Dave Tate to the position number five of the Historic Preservation Commission with the term expiring on August 1, 2020. Item D, resolution accepting local cares grant to approve the resolution number 3962 accepting the City of Pasco's allocation from the Department of Commerce, uh, coronavirus relief funds for local government. So, uh, with that is the consent agenda. Uh, Mayor Protem, would you like to make a motion? Or if anybody else has, uh, if, if there is no other or further discussion or changes to the consent agenda, uh, I would like to entertain a motion.
I move to approve consent agenda as read.
There's been a motion to approve the consent agenda as read. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Uh, I believe, uh, yes, I, there's a second from Councilmember Roach. Um, can we have a roll call, please, for that vote?
Serrano.
Yes.
Alvarado.
Yes.
Maloney.
Yes.
Milne.
Yes.
Roach.
Yes.
Barajas.
Yes.
And Martinez.
Yes.
It was unanimous, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you. The vote passes unanimously. Uh, with that, we'll go to item number five, proclamations and acknowledgements, and I don't see any tonight. Uh, and we'll move right along to six where there's report from committees and/or officers. Is there any council members that would like to share, um, uh, anything that they've done or any experiences that they may want to share?
Uh, this is Councilwoman Roach, and I wanted to just let everybody know that last Wednesday, uh, there was the Visit Tri-Cities Board Meeting that took place. So just a routine meeting, um, you know, they've, uh, had some decline in membership, obviously, but they also have some positive stuff going on with local businesses in Benton and Franklin Counties, and that is the "We Are Open" campaign to let folks in the community know which businesses are open. Um, the other thing that I thought was of importance that you all might, wanted to know about is that, um, the Benton County Commissioners, as well as the Franklin County Commissioners, on Tuesday, uh, both at 9:00 AM are planning on, uh, having a, applying for the variance to move to Phase Two. And so, Visit Tri-Cities had requested all of our signatures, um, on, on that letter, uh, that's going to accompany those county commissioners pursuing, uh, a variance application. So just wanted to inform you all of that.
Thank you, Councilmember Roach. Anybody else?
Mr. Mayor, uh, this is Councilmember Maloney. I have a few things to say.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Maloney.
Thank you. So, um, just wanted to talk a little bit about some of the protests that have been ongoing. Um, and kind of, I guess, um, you know, I've been listening and reading and, you know, trying to, trying to understand exactly what's going on and how it's going on. Um, and I think you all know that I care deeply about how our political systems affect minority groups. And we know that there are some historical injustices that clearly still create some harm today. And we're seeing it play out with the most recent, with the recent homicide of George Floyd and others. Um, and I, I struggle with my role in these matters. Um, but I know that standing aside and doing nothing is wrong. And so I believe the best role for, for me is to use my voice to amplify those around me who may not be heard. So I've been in contact with a couple of local community groups, and I just wanted to read some statements from them. Uh, first, um, many of you have seen an email from, uh, Mr. Felix Vargas, um, but he also had a press release from Consejo Latino that I just wanted to read onto the record. And I'll just quote, and I'll read it, um, verbatim, so this is not me editorializing. "We join millions of Americans in demanding justice for the brutal death of George Floyd at the hands of the Minneapolis police. Justice must necessarily include criminal charges against the responsible members of the police department, trial, conviction, and sentencing. We should not accept anything less. We should also recognize that communities of color have borne disproportionate amount of abuse and violence at the hands of police officers whose job is to enforce laws while protecting and serving all members of a community. This situation remains a matter of local and national concern. Our own community lived through a painful chapter with the Pasco Police shooting of Antonio Zambrano Montez in February of 2015. Well, Pat, the Pasco Police Officers were not charged due to, in large measure, um, to an archaic state criminal statute. A prolonged and peaceful protest movement yielded dialogue and cooperation with the city and its police department. In the end, our police adopted change and reform to their policies on use of lethal force, respect for human dignity, specialized training, recruitment into the force, and adopted a proactive community engagement program. The police department, the Pasco Police Department, has gone on to achieve national accreditation as professional law enforcement organization, making a model for other cities in our state and beyond. While concerned Americans have a right to protest the death of George Floyd, we believe that they should do so peacefully and safely. The current widespread violence perpetrated in several American cities, including Seattle, is a disservice to Mr. Floyd and distracts from achieving the justice we seek. It also hurts US businesses that are already reeling from the COVID-19 closures. Civil rights icon and US Congressman John Lewis said it best, "Be constructive, not destructive." History has proven time and again that nonviolent, peaceful protest is the way to achieve just, the justice that we all deserve." Consejo Latino Board Members, Felix Vargas, and Leo Morales. And I'd like to read one other thing, um, from, um, Naima Chambers Smith, who is the Chief Executive Officer for the Tri-Cities Diversity and Inclusion Council. One second, let me find my place. The statement reads, "Although the killing of George Floyd floods the internet and news, he is just one example of how black people are being treated on a daily basis in our country. It should be noted that there have been many that were killed before him. I feel the most important thing to share is that, just like the coronavirus is a pandemic, the killing of black people is a pandemic too. We need a cure for both. People of color can't create change and dismantle systemic racism alone. We need the help of those with, with privilege to use their voices to create change. That means implementing policies that legitimately create racial justice and social equity. That also means supporting black businesses, speaking up for unjust treatment of minorities, demanding that police that abuse their powers are charged and held accountable for their actions, that more funding be put toward the economic development and growth of minority communities, and require training of all employed at every level of the education system and government on matters such as cultural competence, trauma-informed practices, unconscious bias, DEI, inclusion hiring practices, and overall addressing the systemic racism that exists in our country. The Tri-Cities Diversity and Inclusion Council is dedicated to fostering a unified community, embracing cultures, and celebrating diversity through education and advocacy, and the promotion of cultural competence and compassion. We would love the support of the city in helping our, our organization fulfill its mission." And she's asked me to please share that they're looking for a supportive community, and if anyone's interested in contacting her, um, she can be reached at, um, N-A-I-M-A at tri-citiesdiversityandinclusioncouncil.org, or at the phone number 1-760-453-1983. That's the end of those statements, and I just want to say that, you know, I, I believe that so many things of what we're looking for to be enacted in the police department have been enacted in ours. And I'm sure there's still work to do. There's always continued work to do. But I do believe that Pasco is trying very hard to, to move forward, and as a police department, we can see by the community's response that Pasco's not the place to, uh, to, to feel unheard and feel abused by the police in the same way that so, that so many other cities are struggling. Again, we're not faultless, but we've come a long way, and we're continuing to make progress. And I thank the chief and the, and the police, and the Pasco Police Officers for all their hard work and, and care for the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maloney, and, um, I take to heart and appreciate so much those statements that were made by those committees or groups, uh, such as our Inclusion Committee, Committee and Consejo Latino. Uh, that is exactly, uh, you know, that, that's the purp, their purpose, and they're doing exactly what, uh, what they were there to do, and that's to bring peace, uh, in these trying times. Um, and, and also being able to express, um, you know, everybody, everybody's, uh, freedom of, of speech. And I, I was going to bring it up during miscellaneous discussion, Mr. Maloney. Um, maybe as a group, we can discuss whether or not we can work with these groups and, and staff, of course, to, to perhaps, oh, and also, uh, Gabriel, um, had, had mentioned it with, to me, maybe we can, uh, come up with a resolution, uh, that would be approved by the council to, uh, to encourage peaceful protesting and encourage people to express their freedom, their right to, to freedom of speech. And, uh, it was just a thought. Maybe we can talk about it during miscellaneous discussion. But thank you for bringing that up, Mr. Maloney, and, uh, we'll bring it up during miscellaneous, uh, the miscellaneous, miscellaneous section, but appreciate, uh, you sharing with that tonight. Anybody else, uh, the council, would like to share? If there's nobody else, um, I'd like to pause to make sure we give everybody a chance. I would just like to share that, um, I just got back from, uh, working with the other mayors from the Tri-Cities and Prosser in working on a public safety announcement to encourage the community to, um, to continue doing what we're supposed to do to try to minimize the spread of this virus. And so you will be seeing a public safety announcement coming out soon on that, and want to keep encouraging the community and the public, um, to do so and to do that and, uh, and be, and be compliant with that, not only just for us individually, but for others. The other thing that I wanted to share was I did, uh, was on a call with Governor Inslee and about approximately 10 other mayors within our area, region here, uh, on this side of the mountains. And, um, it, it appears that, you know, this, I'll just say the Yakamar area is of, is experiencing a, of an increasing amount of numbers in their cases with the virus, and they're going through, uh, some measures to try to minimize that. And my biggest, um, what I was advocating for the most is just to, to help and assist, uh, for us to open up our businesses again, and how vital it is. And I feel like we're at a breaking point, uh, and how vital it is for us to, to get to a place where we can open up our businesses. And one of the things that he had mentioned, uh, this is the governor, was, "Well, how do you, you two mayors feel about, uh, requiring there to be masks anytime, uh, the, the public would go into a commercial retail business?" And I will tell you that I told, I, I shared with him that I would advocate that upon council approval to, to do that, to go that far, so that we can open up our businesses, because this is important for everybody, not just the small business owners, but the community as a whole, uh, to open up businesses, but to do it safely, to do it with the restrictions put in place so that we can minimize the spread of, uh, the virus. And, um, and it sounded like, um, you know, he, he was working, uh, towards making that better for us. And then, uh, it wasn't, I, I believe it was just later that evening that he came out and changed the numbers and got us closer to that place where, where we could start applying and, um, uh, applying for the Phase Two, um, Phase Two on, on the program. So I wanted to share that I did that. Um, so next, we will, um, we will go to the next on, on the agenda, uh, on the agenda, and, uh, which is 10, let me get back there. Let's see here. Which is, uh, item seven, hearing and hearings and actions on ordinances and resolutions relating thereto. I would like to note that, um, we're going to make a, we're going to change the agenda item to remove item 10B, uh, due to a bid protest. So item 10B will be removed from the agenda as we move forward. But for now, we'll, um, we'll start with 7A, street vacation, vacating portions of the street and alleys in Washington, Washington addition. And we will be continuing a public hearing, uh, from the, from the council. So with that, uh, is Mr., is it Mr., Mr. Zabel? Are you, are you going to take that?
Uh, Mr. White's going to do that.
Mr. White, are you, are you on?
I am, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mayor and Council. And as you mentioned, Mr. Mayor, this item is continued from the March 16th, um, city council meeting in order to better coordinate this vacation request with a preliminary plat that's occurring that both involves this area and, uh, the streets, uh, the right-of-ways that are proposed for vacation. So between now and March, that has occurred. We have a formal approval of the preliminary plat through the Hearing Examiner that was received today. Um, there are no issues with this street vacation. The preliminary plat that was approved, at least the schematic, is, uh, the last attachment in your agenda report on this item if the council is interested. And given all that's been, uh, considered involving this vacation request and the coordination that's occurred particularly with the property owner to the east in Tierra Vida, staff would recommend council's favorable consideration of the proposed vacation ordinance.
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. White. Uh, so this is, again, we are continuing the hearing. Uh, is there anybody, uh, any of the council have any questions or comments they would like to make at this time? If not, then, uh, I'm going to call, oh, and we did not get any, uh, any information or, uh, any notice from anybody who had questions or wanted to discuss on this item. So, um, I will go ahead and just for the record, uh, call upon anybody else uh, that would have a, a question or would like to comment on this particular topic. Okay, so the, the final call for a public comment regarding, uh, this, this, uh, agenda item. Okay, so I'm going to close the hearing. I'll close the hearing and I'll ask for a motion from council. Councilmember.
Mayor, this is.
Yeah, go ahead.
This is Captain Us. Uh, I move to adopt ordinance number 4491, vacating all roads and alley, alleys lying north of the center line of East Helena Street and east of the center line of Missoula Street within the plat of Washington addition and further authorize publication by Summerion.
There's been a motion, uh, to adopt ordinance number 4491. Is there a second?
Councilmember Maloney, I'll second that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Maloney. It's been a second. So is, if there's no further comments by the council? All those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay, motion passes unanimously. For the record, thank you very much. Next, we'll move right along to, uh, ordinances and resolutions not relating to hearings. We have, um, a resolution to ratify emergency order related to COVID-19. Uh, here. Mr. Zabel, would you like to?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you. And, uh, yeah, we actually have three resolutions for council to consider, and, uh, they are essentially modified emergency orders. Uh, these are orders you've already seen once before, but for various reasons, uh, resolution, uh, 3963, for instance, was extended by the governor's order. And so we need to extend our own emergency resolution to coincide with the governor's order. Um, motion, the, uh, resolution 3964 and 3965, uh, are some temporary benefits the council had authorized, uh, several weeks ago as we, uh, started moving into the pandemic in our, in our response to it. And this would, uh, authorize the extension of those benefits through the end of the year, which coincides with the federal, uh, federally mandated benefits as well. So, uh, staff recommendation is to, uh, to, uh, we'll see, three separate motions approve the three resolutions.
All right, thank you, Mr. Zabel. So if, does anybody have any comments on any one of these motions? We'll start with the first one. Um, any, any questions or comments from the council? I have already seen these and, uh, like, like, uh, Mr. Zabel had been mentioned, mentioned, and, uh, um, I'm, I'm ready to approve these. So if there's no further comments, uh, Councilwoman Barajas, if you'd like to make a motion, please?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. Um, I move to approve resolution number 3963, ratifying emergency order number 2020-002.1 relating to extending temporary moratorium on utility service shut-offs and late fees for Pasco, for City of Pasco customers.
Thank you.
This is Ribbon. Uh, I'll second.
Okay, so there's been a motion, and there's been second to move to approve resolution 3963. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Um, and again, uh, council, you can feel free to, uh, chime in if, if you have any comments, but if not, uh, Mayor Protem, if you'd like to continue with the motion. Next motion?
Thank you, Mayor. Next motion, I move to approve resolution number 3964, ratifying emergency order number 2020-004.1 relating to extending temporary expansion of administrative paid leave for City of Pasco staff.
Okay, there's been a motion, uh, to approve resolution number 3964. Do I hear a second?
This is Serrano. I'll second that.
Councilmember Serrano with a second. Thank you very much. All those, if there's no further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
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 Okay, motion passes unanimously. Next, Ms. Barajas?
Uh, the next one, last one, I move to approve resolution number 3965, ratifying emergency order number 2020-005.2 relating to extending temporary change in leave policies.
Thank you. There's been a, a motion to approve resolution 3965. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Uh, I believe that was Mr., Mr. Milne.
That's Captain.
Mr., Councilman Dave Milne, a second in that motion. So all those in favor of, uh, to approve resolution 3965 signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes unanimously. And thank you for that, council. Um, I think these are very important orders and, um, resolutions put in place to, to continue, uh, doing business for the City of Pasco. So next, unfinished business, uh, number nine, there's none, uh, new business. We go to confirmation of Civil Services Commission Personnel Board appointments. Mr. Zabel?
Thank you, Mayor, and, uh, again, council. So to, this evening, uh, council's, I've been asked to consider, uh, two appointments, uh, reappointment and appointment to the city's Civil Service Commission, which has authority on certain labor and employment rules, uh, relating to our public safety employees in police and fire. Uh, those are also include civilian employees within those departments as well as, uh, the commissioned, uh, employees. And so we, uh, have a reappointment of Janice Hastings. And some of you may be familiar with, uh, Ms. Hastings, but she's been on our commission for several years now and is, I think, really done a great job, sets the bar for, for the commission. And, uh, I'm excited to be able to present to her for you as a, as a reappointment. And then, uh, a new, a person fairly new to Pasco and would be new to the commission, uh, Ms. Saldúa, uh, has a, has a degree in the public safety field. Uh, she also has worked in and around, uh, civil service, a, as a civil service, not in, not in Pasco, but as a civil service-covered employee. Uh, she currently is not, however, but, uh, has a lot of experience with public safety employees, uh, in her professional employment. And I think she'd be an excellent, uh, addition to the Civil Service Commission. So, uh, that would be, uh, an appointment, uh, to fill out a, a term. And my recommendation would be for the, for the two appointments.
Thank you, Mr. Zabel. Any comment from the council? If there's none, uh, Councilwoman Bras, would you like to make a motion?
Absolutely, Mayor. Um, I move to confirm the city manager's reappointment of Janice Hastings to position number one, term to expire 2/17/2026, and appoint Josie Saldúa to position number two, term to expire 2/17/2022, to the Civil Service Commission Personnel Board.
Okay, there's been a motion to reappoint, uh, Janice Hastings to position one and Josie Saldúa to position two. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Councilwoman, uh, Roach. All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Right, motion, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, and the next item has been removed from the agenda. So next, we'll go to miscellaneous discussion. Um, would anybody, anybody have anything, uh, they would like to share, uh, before Mr. Zabel shares what he's got?
Yes, Mayor, this is, uh, Councilwoman, uh, Barajas, and I do actually have a statement I'd like to read. And this statement is regarding the protests, if I may.
Okay.
Um, so Mr. Maloney mentioned earlier, um, uh, of the unique position we're in to speak up and speak out on behalf of, um, the underserved. And the situation that we're in currently, um, I understand the frustration over the death of George Floyd, Breonna Taylor, Ahmet Arberry, and many, many more unjustified, unnecessary deaths by a certain small group of individuals. Unnecessary deaths by a certain small group of individuals, they're supposed to protect our community. However, I do wanna point out that they do not represent all of the police officers. Uh it's shameful, painful, and understandable, the frustration of systemic racism leading to peaceful protest is a result. I urge protesters to remain nonviolent. Uh we have the fortune in Pasco to have an excellent police department. Uh with extensive training and as Mr. Maloney mentioned earlier, nationally accredited force. Um yes, enough is enough, and like Martin Luther King said, protests are the language of the unheard. Um let's not lose the track of the me- track of the message by allowing civil unrest to take over. Um I just wanna say thank you to Pasco Police, the first responders. And especially our residents for keeping the peace while also peacefully seeking reform and justice. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Barajas, that was um that was that was heartfelt, anybody um anybody else for miscellaneous discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is uh Councilmember Alvarado.
Mr. Alvarado, go ahead.
I think uh very much related to that, I I mean, uh obvious, uh it's a very difficult time in our country and we're seeing. Um heartbreaking scenes of people who are frustrated and who are um. Heartbroken, uh we're also seeing some folks who are agitating um the worst in us. And um so I I I g- having said that, I do not wanna go into a a speech about this, but I certainly want to uh. Um perhaps uh open up our discussion, um i- if that's okay, Mr. Mayor. Uh about what what it is that our our role as council members and as a city officials uh is in. Being able to declare what it is that we, who it is that we choose to be. Um and so um I think for for from my limited knowledge and experience, I I. I certainly know that we've come a long way in our community policing, and I certainly um. Uh I'm very thankful to have um to be on the other end of a dark um recent history. Um but certainly one that uh as a council, as a body, that we continue to state that that is a priority for us. Uh the the uh community policing that uh builds relationships rather than um. Uh s- uh aims to um essentially promote law and order by any means. Um and so I uh I certainly think that a, I don't know if a statement is in order or the best approach, but it certainly has to do with. Uh for me, community policing, but also not only promoting, but also encouraging people to use their voices. Um and to be able to uh peacefully protest. Um and I think uh lastly, to be able to uh have a way to open, have open. Not uh discourse only, but also dialogue within our community, and I think. Part of that uh it was our, is is our inclusivity commission, and so my pro- my proposal, I guess. For us is to e- expediently set up, set up a um. Gathering of of the inclusivity commission to really work through this, uh with a small cohort of council members to really um. Put out a s- a statement or put out a um. S- something that really states our intention and who we choose to be, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alvarado, and yes, in 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 light of that or in in line with what you're saying. Um I would ask Dave to um somehow maybe wor- have staff work on. With these groups that you're talking about, Mr. Alvarado, so that we can uh come up with a a. And I'm not sure if it's a resolution or a proclamation or both, but uh to to kind of. Help us uh share with the community and where we stand with those kind of things, I also wanted to uh share, Mr. Alvarado, that. You know, I was thinking during the week, we we missed out on our um. Uh for 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 the purposes of the council, we missed out on our retreat. Uh in which if one day we uh soon we get together and uh and get to have our retreat to. To to set our goals for the next two years and and to uh come closer as a council to work together. Uh that is definitely something that needs to be on the agenda item is, as council members, where where do we stand? And uh and what what should we be doing during these trying times? And definitely something we can talk about, but in the meantime, uh Mr. Zabel, any suggestions on uh on uh. Setting a a stage or or getting the committees together to come up with a a resolution?
Yeah, uh our inclusive inclusivity, diversity, and equity committee has. Been appointed by council, they've not met because of the covid interruption and uh. We do have a facilitator lined up and, you know, perhaps they could meet like councils meeting right now and kind of work through and give you some ideas for. Uh a resolution, I I think uh uh Councilmember Alre- Alvarado had asked about um. Council reprenta- representation on that, so if council would wanna discuss that for a minute or two, we can. Figure out who that might be and we can we can pull a group together and and get them to work on that.
And so we can only have the maximum of three?
You'd have a maximum.
Maximum of three, well, Council, this is a good opportunity for us to to discuss that, if uh would there be three volunteers that. Are passionate and would like to be a part of this, um I I I would guess. Mr. Maloney had brought it up, but uh uh go ahead and share share your thoughts and if somebody would like to uh to volunteer to. To be a representative of the council on this.
This is Councilmember Alvarado, I would love to volunteer.
Okay.
This is Mayor Protem Barajas, uh if I allowed, I'd like to volunteer as well.
Okay, one more?
Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to serve if that's um appropriate, but um if if someone else would like to serve instead, I would I would uh happily defer that as well.
Okay. Well.
This is Serrano, same vote as Councilman Malone, I I'm happy to serve, but I'm also happy to allow. Anyone else that that uh feels more qualified, I guess, to do so.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Serrano. So for now, when we have a Councilmember Alvarado, uh Councilmember. Blanche Barajas and Mr. Maloney uh as representatives. And we can move forward and hopefully we can come up with something and uh just have the community understand that we are with them, we are here for them. And we'll do whatever we can to uh to continue this, and with that, I just wanna say that I am. As I was, as I was uh. Getting ready for the weekend and and realizing that the rumors were going around and Richmond was getting ready to protest. Uh you know, to to get a group together, you know, I I was just contemplating on on many, many things, like I know you guys. Uh and and women, uh the other council have been, um but I was just. You know, reading some of the things on social media and I just wanna say that. Um despite so many things that have happened already this year, uh I just am so happy that I'm not. Uh one of those mayors that had to uh provide. A speech of um disappointment, like I've heard so many times around the country. Um one of the things that I heard ninety nine percent of the time was, this is to be peaceful. We're gonna do this right, we're gonna be example for our nation, and I gotta tell you, I'm 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 a proud mayor today. Uh and relieved uh that we have such quality people that wanna do the right thing. Uh and not uh and not cause more more hate and discontent, um. I don't think there's anybody more than us that want our freedoms to be expressed. And but to do it in the way, in a respectable way that it was done, um and I know that there was one instance where. You know, the the crowd may have wanted to get a little, get a more energy out than they needed to. But uh but there was people there to say, this is, this is not how we're gonna do it, we're gonna do it the right way, and and it was expressed. And I couldn't be more proud, uh I I'm just, I'm just. So proud of our community and and showing their true colors and uh and how well they responded to this and. You know, and and had their voice heard as best they could, so. I just wanna say thank you to all the community members for for being responsible and for uh and for being a great American. Uh and being a great citizen and improving the quality of life here in Pasco. I know that this situation sparked up uh a lot of feelings from what's happened here in the past, but we learned from what happened here in the past. And uh accredited police department and all the training that was done, all that stuff has paid off. And the the relationship we have with with our uh uh committees and community and our police department and our staff. Uh is something to be proud of, and uh one of the things ever since I moved here to this to this city, I just. Wanted to be a city that modeled uh for the nation, not just for our state. And I think we've done that, I think we're we're moving towards that and we're working that uh on that better every day, so. With that, I just wanna say thank you once again, um it it brought peace and hope. Uh to my life and uh I know it did for a lot of people, and and there's a lot of work to be done, uh I'm not, I'm not. Demeaning this in any way, there's a lot of work that needs to be done, but we're moving and and we're gonna, we're gonna get there. Uh we just have to take one step at a time, and this weekend Pasco showed that that step was going forward, so thank you very much for that. Um. Hey, anybody else? If not, Mr. Zabel, you have some miscellaneous discussion?
Yes, I had I had a couple of things, Mayor, and I I did wanna, before I get into the main topic, I wanna discuss uh. Note that uh, you know, I was able to spend part of Sunday with uh with uh Chief Gere and Chief Roski. And wanted to just point out that uh, you know, certainly the a lot of credit for the success of Sunday and the peaceful. Protest we had in our town and the condition our town was in, when it was done. Uh is a credit to the people that were doing the protesting, but also to uh. The two chiefs, uh the advanced planning that they put into place to be ready for it and the appropriate presence, you know, there there was a lot of. Di- there was a lot of police in town, but not a lot of police around the protesters, but enough to help keep them safe. And that was our primary goal uh on Saturday, uh. Uh the department did a great job of reaching out uh to the organizers and maintained uh good contact throughout the event. And I wanted to share, uh we did a wrap up Sunday evening, uh Chief Roski was talking to to his staff. Uh probably about twenty or so in the room had come in, maybe twenty five that were out and. Yeah, participating in this event and and trying to keep our city and the and the protester safe. And uh, you know, I can't remember his exact words, but really the sentiment, I should have wrote it down like uh Councilmember Maloney did. And and that I could have read it, but uh but the sentiment was along the lines of. That was part of the reason why the Pasco Police Department is here, is so people can have a voice and they can express it safely. And uh he congratulated them all on a great job that day in keeping the community safe, so. I thought those were really good words and and encouraging for for our officers and wanted to share that with Council. So secondly, uh getting on to another item, earlier in the agenda, you approved uh the CARES Act funds, which was about two and a quarter million dollars. And uh you know, there's a lot that goes in, you know, this is federal dollars that are coming to the. To the city, you you allocated some earlier that were associated with a community development block grant, and so those have a specific. Infrastructure and it and it has very well-known rules associated with it. And a process and uh reporting mechanisms and things like that, and the second uh. Batch of money, which is actually considerably more than the block grant money uh council or the city had received, is uh. Excuse me, um was put together very quickly at the federal level, and there's a lot of people scrambling at the federal, state, and local levels. Uh to try to figure out, I I I think we have a pretty good sense of. Uses, but now we're getting into questions about eligibility and reporting and uh. Those type of things, and then there's probably some local things we need to talk about uh associated with it. Uh whether it's a competitive grant or it would be a first come, first served basis, or whether it was a be a limit. Uh on a grant or a flat amount based on a percentage of gross income, for instance, with uh. With a cap or what the selection process is gonna be, what the reporting process is going to be and. And how do we, at the end of the day, after we spent two and a quarter million dollars, how do we report to the public the impact of those dollars? So the public that that's interested can look and and learn, what did we do and what difference did it make? And I I've asked, uh you know, we've been working with state agencies, particularly Department of Commerce. On this, and I've asked uh our finance director, Rija Sigdel, to talk a little bit about uh the eligibility part. Uh and then um uh Rick White, our C D Director. Is gonna cover the process of distribution and accounting and performance reporting, so with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Rija.
Okay, Rija?
Yes, evening, Council, uh and thank you, Dave, um you covered it really well. Uh there's a lot of um or has been a lot of unknowns on. Uh CARES um Act for local government, which I would just call Local CARES. And um part of um the confusion or uh lack of. Uh information has just been the fact that uh it was an act that rightfully was passed very quickly. Uh and local governments were kind of at the end of um of that cycle of. How it impacts us and what are the expectations of this fund? And we had a really good uh webinar that M R S C had organized with Department of Commerce. And um I'm sure they've read it right now, but they did share their uh their contact information, and we've been trying to work with Department of Commerce to get. Uh more of our uh questions answered, and interestingly in that webinar, a lot of the questions, especially regarding business assistance. Uh was uh very similar, and that one important uh answer that most local governments wanted. Was what are the expectations of the end recipient, which is essentially the small businesses? And if the expectation is that um the small businesses keep the same. Uh type of accounting that is expected of the City of Pasco, uh if the City of Pasco is expected to. Uh make sure that the funds are being spent um as per the federal federal and state guidelines. Uh what is the cost of managing uh that kind of program for the short period of time? Uh but also, will our business owners be able to meet those guidelines as well? And um I bu- I think I can speak for all, many of us were hoping for an answer that essentially said. Um that we can give out these funds as non-reimbursement grants. So essentially, you would make a a program guideline and you would find eligible businesses. Um and you would give them a a chunk of funds and there really would be no. Um need for reimbursement review, um and that would definitely cut on the overhead. Um of the impression that um me and a lot of my peers got from that webinar. Was that Commerce had not really thought about this as, though it is allowed. Uh had not really given it a lot of thought in terms of what are the requirements for the sub recipients. Uh if they're small businesses, so um they're going back and um. Going to um come back to us with an answer, um and um our hope is that at this point. We will be allowed to give non-reimbursable grants uh from local cares. To our local businesses and help them through this difficult time, uh we have not heard back from them, um though I can assure you that I have been. Um contacting them and M R S C almost every other day, and my hope is that the answer is forthcoming anytime soon. The, some of the other eligibility for uh the city's cost um are anything related to covid. Anything that is essential, um and um it cannot um cover any revenue shortfall. So, for example, if we're expecting two million dollars less than sales tax because of covid. Uh you cannot use the CARES Act as a way of making up for that sales tax. Uh and also anything that was not budgeted as of end of March, um which is essentially anything related to covid. We were not anticipating this, we did get the award letter uh with a little bit more documentation on. Um May twenty second, and um that is in your package, um and overall, that is unfortunately. Um the most information that I have about CARES, we are uh waiting on that. Uh additional piece of business assistance, uh and I believe after that, uh we will have almost everything that we. Uh need in terms of how we can fully utilize this grant. And if you have any questions, I will do my best.
Thank you, Rija. Thank you for that report.
And perhaps, Rick, if you could maybe jump in and talk a little bit about. Just just trying to, your your thoughts on distribution and and uh. Ac- accounting and the kind of things we're gonna have to do to, I I did, most of this is just to make council aware of. We we need a bit of an infrastructure we don't have right now.
Yeah, thank thanks, Dave, and that's exactly right. Um this is very similar to the uh stimulus money that the city received. Through Commerce back in two thousand and eight. It was uh not as hastily put together as this, though. But there still were a lot of unknowns with that money and how it needed to be spent. And we're still finding out what many of those expectations are right now. We're currently developing guidelines for the uh block grant money that Dave mentioned earlier. But the CARES money that Rija just discussed. Uh should follow very similar guidelines as the C D B G uh. The the roughly four hundred and some thou- thirty thousand dollars that we received or that council considered a few weeks ago. Um the guidelines uh have been borrowed from a commerce template, Washington State Department of Commerce template. We are uh looking for the proper amount of paperwork documentation that we can use as safeguards for fraud. And uh underwriting guidelines for the grants. And we're um purchasing a software program that is designed specifically for this purpose. The applicant intake and then determining eligibility. There are uh a few uh things that council will need to weigh in on. Again, uh as as uh Mr. Zabel mentioned. The uh maximum amount of loans or excuse me of grants, um how that's distributed, what we expect. But basically, we have a place and it is an eligible activity for business relief in both the C D B G CARES. Package and the uh larger CFR CARES package. Um we're searching diligently for a so a nonprofit group to act as the sub recipient for the processing of these loans. Um we have a number of options. None of them have panned out yet. Uh we were originally hoping to use C A C because they had a bit of uh infrastructure in place. But um some grant funding that they were expecting did not come through, so they won't be able to provide the. Uh sub recipient uh duties for the business relief. We think they can do it, though, for the rental relief. With the use of home consortium fund. So with the risk of uh being um a a little bit vague, uh we are still working with Commerce and HUD. There are some guidelines that we need fine tuning from them on. And uh we hope to have this in place with the choice of a sub recipient for the processing of the business loans. Uh to coincide with the preparation of the um of the guideline finalization from HUD and Commerce.
So so with that, if I could, if I could jump in and and thank you, Rick. June eighth, we were gonna come back to council and provide you a bit of a a more detailed quarterly report. Uh maybe focused uh a little bit on the COVID impact as well as the COVID spending piece for the city. And from that, you're gonna have that piece of information of what does the city spend so far uh in responding to the crisis? Cause those are eligible costs for this. And council will be able to 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 make some determinations as to um. How much they wanna try to dis- distribute, either all two and a quarter million or they do they wanna use some of that to. To um reimburse uh taxpayer costs associated with city expenditures. And then um. You'll have, you'll also have, I I think, another week of effort on our part in kinda nailing down some of this information we're looking for. Trying to trying to determine for you in terms of uh some of the questions that uh that Rick and Rija had discussed. And what I was hopeful of tonight is uh and I I hate to impose on on council because we're at the end of the meeting, but. Uh these unusual times require sometimes unusual med- methods, so. Hopeful of some council discussion this evening on, at least on your collective thoughts. I know you don't really have enough information to make. Definitive decisions about this stuff, but some of your collective thoughts on what you're thinking about, where you'd like to see the money going. Your your kinda your target area. Uh one thing I would ask to keep in mind is. The more recipients we, the the a recipient, whether you get five thousand dollars or whether you get fifty thousand dollars. Pretty much takes same amount of staff time. It's just an extra zero. Uh so the more recipients we have, the more administrative costs are gonna be associated with the with the uh with the dollars available. So something to something to chew on while you're while you're kinda contemplating the question. And I think any information you can provide staff tonight would be helpful. It'll help us fine tune some of our questions with uh with Commerce and others as well.
Thank you, Mr. Zabel. Hopefully, uh everybody was able to to hear all of that. There was a little bit of uh sound. Technical problems with Mr. White, but uh any any comments uh we'd like to share with the staff uh from council?
This is Serrano to take a crack at it. So if I understand correctly, we can either essentially defer pots of money. To the city or to private businesses. That's correct. Or am I correct in that understanding?
You it's, well, the city, you could you could only uh use, you could only reimburse the city out of those monies to the extent. Uh the city would actually have a COVID-related expenditure. So we're we're we'll be able to have, we'll have a. A total for you next week. I I can tell you roughly right now, we're anticipating spending. Uh you know, on the order of uh probably a million and a quarter to a million and a half dollars before the end of the year. And that that's not to say that that, well, it's just a simple matter of subtracting. Uh two and a quarter from from one million and that's how much you can give away. It's it's, I I don't mean to to present it that way because. Uh you know, council's got a reserve in the general fund and other funds and you know, they they may wanna to utilize more of that CARES money. Uh out into the public than just a one hundred percent reimbursement of the city. Maybe they they look at reimbursing seventy-five percent of the anticipated. City costs and uh and uh using the remainder uh uh out in the community.
Okay, I I appreciate that, City Manager Dave uh Zabel. Um I ask that just to make sure I'm clear and and as I talk through this, like you said, we're kinda moving on the fly here, so. Um absolutely, money needs to get out into the city. We have people who aren't going to make rent, mortgage, be able to pay for their cars. Um these are business owners who have worked. A long, long time. My thought as far as reimbursing the city is if we know that our budget is going to be truncated in a way. That we are going to lose employees, uh similar to these people are losing their businesses. We need to determine what portion of the city, the budget the city would need to ensure that doesn't occur. Um if that number is zero and we have to pull from reserves, then we have to ultimately ask our questions, how are we gonna make that money up? Um what fees are we going to potentially raise? Uh what other considerations we're gonna have? Um so again, my preference, strong preference to get as much of the money out into. Um business hands as possible. Um I apologize that that doesn't give you a percentage, a dollar value. Um but we also do need to recognize that essentially we are board members of a business. And that business is a municipal corporation of the city of Pasco. We have a fiduciary responsibility to. The residents of Pasco to make sure that the business doesn't bleed itself too. So. I guess to the extent that next week you come back with information on, again, if we're going to lose positions. Um we need to make sure that the city stays viable in that way. Otherwise, let's flood as much money as we can out into the city. Thank you.
This uh Councilmember Alvarado, I am very much in uh step uh in view with uh Mr. Serrano. Uh so I will echo the exact same statement.
Sorry about that, Councilmember Maloney. Just wanted to say that I appreciate Councilmember Serrano's discernment in this. Um and his level of questioning. Uh mine would also be in support of small business uh first. And uh and then after that, you know, our most vulnerable populations, uh elderly, nursing home. Uh farm workers, um and then supporting uh any needs for P P E. Uh so that's my, those are my inputs for now.
Thank you. This is Councilmember Maloney. Um I very much echo a lot of what Mr. Serrano said. Um and and with an emphasis on quickly. Um we already have businesses that are longstanding businesses in our community. In our downtown that are that are already closing up shop and and we need to move as quickly as possible. I understand. How slow it is when we're flowing down from federal to state to local, um but anything we can do to move things quicker. Um including if it makes some sense for us to, if there's some sort of creative way we can make sure to. You know, lend money directly from the city under this emergency um orders where I believe we have some more flexibility than we typically would. Um if there's something we can do um and try to be creative towards the end, we might I wanna consider that. Um the other thing I'd like to add in addition to the small businesses, um to get our small businesses up on their feet, we need to not just give them money. But ensure we get through the phases quickly so we can fully reopen. And that means making sure that any that that we look at investing into, how can we be, how can we make sure that we're meeting those phase requirements? We can as quickly as possible get to that fully reopened state. So um I would like that to be a consideration as well. I think that will be the lo- in the long run, the most effective thing we can do to reopen businesses and keep people safe. So we need to, in an in an interim, make sure that these businesses survive until until we can reopen. And then also make sure that we can we can reopen as quickly as possible. Um you know, we've been very prudent and cautious in the past as to how we manage our budget. And we have a rainy day fund that is um that is healthy. And we've seen that in our bond rates. Um I certainly don't want to make imprudent decisions now that will hurt us in the future. But I am I am in favor of dipping in some extent into a rainy day fund. It'd be hard to imagine many scenarios that are more rainy than today is. So um I'm in favor of of if we need to, going a little bit above and beyond um the money that we've been given to make sure that we have, that our residents. Our taxpayers, our businesses are taken care of, because that's ultimately the money we are managing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maloney, Mr. Serrano, and everybody who's commented. I appreciate it. Uh Mr. Zabel, are you? Get some ideas?
That's that's great. I appreciate the input and uh I I know it was a little bit messy. Uh the hope tonight was. The reason it was messy is because we didn't have all the information and and wanted to try to save a little time and have this discussion tonight rather than. Dump it on you and have this discussion next week. Now you got a week to think about it. Uh hopefully, we'll have some additional information next week we can all. Chew on and uh council can make some more specific uh, give us some more specific direction next week. Perfect. So thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, council. Um a- anybody else have any last parting comments before I uh get ready to close? Or go to the next item and close the meeting? I'm sorry, was this Mr. Alvarado?
Yes, uh I believe uh Mr. Maloney was also uh chiming in, but.
Yeah, I was, yeah, thank you, Councilman Alvarado. I was trying to chime in, but obviously something's wrong with my iPad, but uh. I was wanting to say that I do agree with uh Councilman Maloney as far as small business Aunt Roach, when she's talking about small businesses. Uh I just would hate to see the downtown dry up. Um I know a lot of those businesses are closed and I just worry about them greatly, so. Whatever we could do to to get the the downtown back in order, obviously in a safe manner. Um is also of my utmost concern. So I just wanted to say that I was in agreement with Serrano, Maloney, and Zara Roach as far as uh the different ideas.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Millie, um for those comments. Anybody else?
Yeah, this is Councilmember Alvarado. Um just a a clarity question uh for um. Would we have to have a kind of vote for a specific direction or just maybe more discussion? I know next uh week is uh not a voting uh meeting.
Yeah, I I don't know that we'll have. I I I'm hoping next week we can kinda nail down some of the questions we haven't answered tonight. And we can get some specific direction from council and that we get some additional information from Commerce, for instance. And uh we can have a really good sense going into it, where we're going next. We would bring to the next meeting. Uh whatever resolution we needed to adopt the program and uh and then we get this thing moved forward.
Thank you.
Mayor, uh Mayor Proton Barajas. I was making my comments, but it kept getting cut off. Um just really wanted to point out that it sounds like we are all in agreeance of supporting our downtown businesses and businesses in general. To get right back up where where we um you know, benefit families that are struggling and business owners that are struggling. Um so just in agreeance of of all our council. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Mayor, this is Councilwoman Roach. May I say something?
Yes.
There, this is in the same vein as the conversation we're having right now. It's not necessarily about. How do we spend the money uh that we just discussed, but uh you know. I had a email exchange a few weeks ago with uh Mr. Zabel about what some other downtowns and cities are doing. Uh in the means, in the ways of helping their small business and helping their downtowns or main streets. Uh the the example that I had found was in Cincinnati. And what they have done is. They have closed down some of the streets to the downtown for uh uh cars. But they've opened up as far as allowing those downtown business owners to basically spill out onto sidewalks. And maybe par- parking areas so that they can do seating. Um they can do the distancing that they need because as a lot of downtowns across uh the United States. They're old buildings. They don't have the same kinda space and the square footage that maybe newer buildings have. And so even in this, you know, in the earlier discussion about our our uh by-county commissioners applying for variances for. For Phase Two, maybe that can also come up in our discussion as to if we get those variances, how can we. Allow for those business owners to maybe increase the capacity of their uh their patrons. Um how can we take advantage of the fact that we are in our summer, one of our uh easiest seasons for us to be outdoors? And to still shop at boutiques or uh peruse the furnitures down uh downtown. Or maybe go to a bakery or a restaurant. So just some food for thought for other council members of of. Conversations we can have around um how we reopen and how we help our small business owners. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And Mr. Zabel, go ahead.
Uh yes, thank you. Uh I I did wanna share with the with the council that uh we do have an interdisciplinary team. Working on that very issue. We're looking at uh, you know, under the concept that, for instance, uh Phase Two, I think, is fifty percent. Capacity uh for a restaurant. Uh so fifty percent capacity of restaurants. Yeah, you probably don't need one hundred percent of your required parking and maybe on a private lot that maybe doesn't have street frontage. Uh we could use some of the parking or the business could use some of the parking spaces to be able to increase a headcount at their restaurant. Cause it's difficult to run a restaurant at fifty percent capacity. And that gives you, like, uh as Councilmember Roach mentioned, that gives you an opportunity to get more heads out there. Uh downtown, we, you know, we're uh working with uh uh our our teams working with uh Colin Hastings of Chamber of Commerce. He's been one of our contacts that they've used. Uh and Colin happened to has, happened to have been in the restaurant business, which makes it even helpful. Not only is the Chamber President, uh Executive Director, but also has a pretty extensive experience in the business, so. Uh downtown, we're looking at sidewalk seating. Uh and then potentially, there might be some opportunity for uh. Seating in parking spaces, although our parking spaces downtown, once that opens up, is gonna be a bit of a premium, so. But uh trying trying to look at a a number of different alternatives and and we should be able to bring something to council before too long. It's, we were contemplating that probably be in the in the um. Shape of an emergency order similar to to what uh. Uh what council has seen for the sign code, ver- the temporary sign code uh relaxation on takeout signs, so. Something that, and and you let me think I, you know, we chatted about a little bit. Uh it's gonna give us a chance to experiment around a little bit and as we refine some of this stuff for more permanent. Uh we'll have some experience with it and but maybe a better handle on what works and what doesn't work.
Thank you for that, Mr. Zabel. A great ideas and uh looking forward to to doing uh, you know. With with need comes um innovation. And um it's it's great to hear this. And we'll do whatever it takes to to get things going again. Thank you very much. And so with that. Oh, go ahead, Mr.
I do. Maloney.
Maloney, okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I just wanted to, I want to address something that came up a little bit last week and certainly has come up a couple of times during my, my term in office here. And people often ask me, why did I choose to vote the way I did? And I, I really have to say, I'm gonna go back to my oath of office and I'm gonna read it out loud because I think people have forgotten exactly what we signed up for and what we swore when we, when we entered office. So I, Craig Maloney, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution and laws of the State of Washington and all local ordinances. And that I will faithfully and impartially perform and discharge the duties of office of council member for the city of Pasco according to the law to the best of my ability. And so what I want to emphasize there is you will not catch me voting against the law. I won't do it. I believe that violates my oath of office and there's nothing more important to me as a council member than following my oath of office. And so again, as people question, why did I choose to vote in certain ways? Question first, did it break or violate a state or other law? And if it did, I almost surely voted against it. I will not knowingly broke my oath. And I believe that's the standard we should hold all of our elected officials to at every level. First, follow the law. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Mr. Maloney. Anybody else? Then I would like to just, before we go to the next item, just remind everybody that with the storms that we have been having lately, come fires and due to the lightning storms that we've had, I want to thank all the firefighters, all the emergency responders. And also want to encourage everybody to do the same, to thank the firefighters. You know, with this weekend as busy as it was and then with these storms and these sagebrush fires that we had between Anford Side and all the way up towards Yakima, kept them very busy and and they were out fighting these fires for our communities. So want to say thank you to all the firefighters out there. And again, I want to encourage the public to thank them when they see them. A lot of times, they do such a great job that we don't even realize it and we take it for granted, but would like to say thank you with that. And then one last motivation and encouragement is please, community, let's do what we can to get our businesses to safely open up. And I have to say that, you know, one of the things that, that the governor, whether we agree with what he says and what he does or not, as Mr. Maloney says, we need to follow the law. And as I went out to Walmart today, and not just Walmart, it was, it was just as I was driving through town, they're estimating that only 30% of the community is, is actually protecting others by wearing masks. And I'm afraid, as much as I don't like to wear the mask, I'm willing to make that sacrifice because the benefits outweigh so much more if we can just do our part in, in not spreading the virus so that we can maintain safety and, and then hopefully working on those numbers to lower the spread of the virus so that our business can continue to stay open. The last thing we need is to open up businesses and then all of a sudden we have an outbreak or some type of an increase in the numbers. But if we just all do our part to just use these whenever you're with anybody in the public, I want to encourage that. And I, and I want to tell you that I don't take that lightly because these things bother me. They really do personally, but the benefits outweigh. Now, we're not asking people who would have a health issue by wearing these to do that. We don't want to bring harm to anybody. But I think that the majority of the citizens, I'm gonna ask you to please do your part in helping the community as a whole by wearing your mask as much as possible. So I just wanted to end with that. I appreciate your confidence and, and your willingness to help out. And that's what we're here to do. So with that, I'm gonna go to the next, next item on the agenda and that's there's no executive session, obviously, Mr. Manager, so this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much and have a good night.